So we are being recorded right now, just so everybody knows.
I'm ready. We're ready, right? Everybody?
Yeah, everything's all set in my end.
This is the Barrington zoning board of adjustment. As Chair of the zoning board of adjustment, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, this is to confirm that we are. We are utilizing the Microsoft Team for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Microsoft Team, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-603-664-02440, and conference ID 437582310, pound sign, or call 603-664-0330, or email jhuckins@barrington.nh.gov, or bit.ly/barrzb200916. This is Wednesday, September 16th, 2020. It is after 7:00 PM. Please note that all votes that are being taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call votes. I'm going to call the roll call now. Cheryl Huckins?
Here.
George Bailey?
Here.
Ray Demaris?
Here.
And Chair Karen Forbes. I want to note for anybody who is participating that we only have four members tonight. There's another member who is being added, and we would have five members next month. It would still require for any affirmative relief that you receive a three out of four vote for approval.
But tonight? Normally, three out of five.
Tonight, you need three out of four. So we're going to go to the first case, which is 261-39-gr-20-zba appeal. The owner is Richard Kelsey. Is the applicant on?
Can everybody hear me?
Oh, it's Eric Maher on behalf of Richard Kelsey, right?
That's correct. You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. And I believe Mr. Kelsey is on as well. I think I heard him. First, thanks, everybody, for holding this hearing tonight. This is an appeal of an administrative decision under RSA 67441 to authorize the issuance of a building permit for a property that is not located on a Class 5 road. The property at issue is map 261 Lot 39. In advance of tonight's meeting, I submitted a memoranda with various exhibits. I understand the difficulty it can be sometimes doing a presentation via either Zoom or Microsoft Teams, so I wanted the board to have some form of product in order to kind of guide through my presentation. The property that's really the subject of this appeal, it's called South Island, located in Mendham's Pond. It's owned by Mr. Kelsey. It's 1.64 acres in size. There's an aerial photograph that I've attached to the memo as Exhibit A that'll provide you with a good layout of what the property looks like. You'll see at the southern tip, oh, thank you for whoever's doing that, you'll see at the southern tip is a dock, and then to the west of that, at the sort of southwest quadrant of the island, you'll see the outline of, I didn't scan in very well. I apologize for that. I hope you all have the color version of it. If not, I can send it over. At the southwest quadrant of the island is a cabin. That cabin dates back to the, I believe it's the 1940s. It's approximately, I believe, 338 square feet in size. There's limited amenities inside of it. I believe there's a range and an oven, as well as a sofa, bed, and a stove area. That picture is perfect to demonstrate it. Roughly two-thirds of the structure itself is stone, with one-third of it being wood. The property, the cabin itself was, and it historically had a sink on the inside of it. Historically, it has been used for three-season use. It has not been used for year-round use. Mr. Kelsey intends on continuing to use the property as a seasonal camp and not using it particularly during the winter months. Back in 2016, as the pictures will demonstrate, the cabin was significantly vandalized. The door was torn off. The windows were all broken out of it, leaving the wood components of the structure to be exposed to the elements for a prolonged period of time. Due to the age of the structure, the damage caused by vandalism, and the prolonged exposure to the elements of the wood components of the building are in dire need of repair. Mr. Kelsey undertook to perform the repairs to the structures. He didn't, wasn't aware at the time that he needed a building permit until the building inspector informed him of his need. He had already done a limited amount of work, but that's what brings him before this board now, is his efforts to ensure that he's complying with all provisions of the State Building Code and ensuring that he obtains all requisite permits and approvals. What Mr. Kelsey intends to do is to repair the damage to the structure itself, as well as make some fairly basic improvements and added amenities to improve the safety, comfort, as well as sanitary condition of the property. So the intended work, I'm going to put into two buckets. One has to do work to the cabin itself, and the other is, relates to the construction of a structure in the middle of the island, which I'm going to colloquially refer to as the outhouse. Discussing the structure first, due to the structural issues associated with the wood portions of the cabin, Mr. Kelsey intends on replant, repairing and replacing those wood portions. As part of that, he would also, he intends on replacing the roof itself, and to the roof, he intends to the rear-facing side of the property, installing a limited amount of solar panels. The specifications for those solar panels are attached to what I provided. It's not ideal because of just how difficult it is to print things from Amazon, but it was provided with the intent of demonstrating the specifications of a product he's looking at. It would be three to four panels, each of which is approximately 40 inches wide by 26.3 inches long. The estimate of the square footage that this would take up, that these panels would take up on the roof is specified in my memoranda, and I believe it's between, I believe it's between 20 and 30, 30 square feet. Subject to check. Yeah, 22 and 30 square feet total. These panels are not anticipated to be visible from the shore of Mendham's Pond, and for two reasons. One, it'd be on the rear-facing side. The area is heavily vegetated, so there's a lot of tree cover, and it's, I believe it'd also be up gradient, so that you're not going to be able to see it if, say, you're kayaking around Mendham's Pond. The amount, the wattage associated with these panels is relatively small, and so it'd only be able to power a limited number of appliances, largely due to, you know, just adding some limited comfort, such as lights, et cetera. One, turning next to the outhouse, you'll see that there is a diagram, which I believe is Exhibit H of what I've provided, and that shows the approximate location. The proposed location for the outhouse itself is well in excess of any applicable setbacks that might exist under the town zoning ordinance, associated with shorefront protection, as well as the New Hampshire Shoreland Protection Act. It's intended to have a composting toilet, which this board has previously approved when this was initially considered by the board. In addition, Mr. Kelsey would like to install a small sink for just washing dishes, as well as a small shower, both of which would pump water from the lake. There's no intent on installing a drinking, drinking water well, so the water is not intended to be potable. And as part of that, Mr. Kelsey would propose the installation of a wastewater disposal system that would be authorized by DES. He's already been in discussions with a contractor for the potential location of such a system, which would be, given the size of the island, there's no concerns on our end as to applicable setbacks or distance. The nature of the septic system itself would be subject to discussions with DES as to whether it's going to be a full septic system, per se, some form of mini dry well, which is allowed under limited instances, or something else. But regardless, it'll be subject to DES review and permitting requirements. We believe that this proposal is fully compliant with the criteria necessary for this board to authorize the issuance of a building permit under RSA 67441. There's four criteria that need to be met in order to allow for the authorization. It can't distort the official map. It can't increase the difficulty of carrying out the master plan. There can't be hardship to future purchasers, and there can't be any financial impact to the town. We don't believe that, we believe that all those criteria are met here. In terms of distortion in the official map, this is a pre-existing lot. There's a, it's a pre-existing structure that's been used since the 1940s, so we don't believe there'll be any change whatsoever of the official map. In terms of the increase or difficulty of carrying out the master plan, the only provision of the master plan that I saw implicated here had to do with, there had been stated concerns about properties located along shorefront in the town of Barrington being converted from a seasonal use to a year-round use. As is reflected in the memo, Mr. Kelsey only intends on using this property for three-season use. He's willing for the, to have the board impose a condition that limits the use to three-season use, i.e. not in the wintertime, and recording the decision with the registry of deeds, so that way, future purchasers of the property are put on notice of this limitation. In addition to that, we believe that the physical characteristics of the property really preclude any use in the wintertime. Access during the winter is difficult because it is on an island. Of course, you could probably access it, assuming that the ice is thick enough by snowmobile, but even at that, it would not be really comfortable living conditions during winter months, particularly, you know, it's not insulated at this point in time. It's a very small living environment. And in addition, even with the outhouse that's proposed, because it would be outside, it wouldn't be able to be used in the winter months because, to avoid, you know, bursting of pipes and the, you know, damage to the property itself, it would have to be drained and winterized. So we believe that with, that there's no potential impact of difficulty carrying out the master plan. Turning to hardship on future purchasers, I don't believe that's implicated at all here. This is, again, a cabin that's existed since the 1940s. Really, it's updating this and allowing for some additional amenities. If anything, it will be, it'll actually improve the condition of the site. It'll allow for, you know, folks to have a sanitary place to go to the bathroom, wash dishes, take showers, et cetera. And in terms of financial impact to the town, again, there's no anticipated financial impact to the town, primarily because the cabin will remain a three-season use, and it is in accordance with the historic use of the property. I've been talking a lot, and so I'd be happy to take what questions that the board might have to the best of my ability to answer them.
I have a couple of questions. First, is there currently a outhouse on the property?
There is not. The outhouse would be a new structure.
What kind of range was in the building to start with?
What type? I believe it was like, oh, Richard, why don't you take that one?
Okay, so what, mine is, there was an outhouse on the property.
Oh.
It was one of the, it was, that was vandalized and rendered unusable.
My apologies. I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yes, there was just a pit outhouse on the property.
And Richard, is my understanding correct that the range on the property, it's a gas range?
Yeah, it's a propane, propane gas.
Any questions from any other board members? No?
No.
Is there anybody on who is prepared to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody who is on who is prepared to speak in opposition to the application? The question part of the proceeding, and the board will discuss. Any comments from anybody?
So, for a start, I think it's been deemed a rustic cabin, is what we deemed it the last time. It's existed since the 1940s as a rustic cabin. A lot of the discussion was that it was a seasonal camp, and we can go back and forth as to what each of those are, but as a seasonal camp or a rustic cabin, it was pretty, and that's what we agreed
to.
The last time, as far as approving the building permit for it. So, a lot of the discussions in the legal documents here that were presented are classified as a seasonal camp. I leave that to others to try to distinguish between each of them, so.
John, can you speak to that?
John?
Yeah, I'm Newton. Okay. The only definition that is looked at, the town doesn't have, recognize what is a rustic or seasonal. The only time that it's done that way is through DES. DES has a regulation about if it doesn't have a septic and it wasn't lived in year-round that they could prove before, I think it was 1972 or something, then it's considered seasonal, and it's there, you know, because of a septic thing. And it actually has to be disclosed at any time of sale that that's what that is, a seasonal. So they understand that. In order to have it be anything other than seasonal, they would require a septic approved from DES and the whole bit. They're the only ones that define it. The town doesn't have a definition.
So do we have a definition for seasonal camp? No?
No. We don't have that seasonal or rustic cabin or any of that. We don't have any definition. We just have dwellings.
So they have it not being occupied between December 1st and April 15th? I think we also previously talked about some sort of sanitary sewage disposal at the property?
Well, we talked about putting a composting toilet on, on the island, because I did have an outhouse, and we agreed last time that a composting toilet would be appropriate to have on there. Yes.
So the only changes are the shower and the?
Well, now, the reason for, well, we decided not to add solar panels, that was one of the conditions that we put on the approval, was that they allowed them to pump water. And once you pump water, now you're generating, you know, wastewater. You need an improved septic system. And this is a very sensitive island, very sensitive island environmentally, so.
Let's take a step back. I just want to be clear. The only changes between what was proposed before and what's proposed now is the addition of the solar panels and the addition of the shower.
Well, they're, no, they're putting in a complete outhouse facility. It's a composting toilet, shower, complete other structure that they're adding to the island now.
Right, but they would have had to have had some kind of composting toilet for something. We'd already anticipated the toilet. It's the fact that there's a shower in that area too, and not just the composting toilet, right? So those are the two things we're talking about that are additions. And when they said before, when we said our criteria before was, must remain, we are, we wrote, "The structure must remain a seasonal camp. No insulation shall be installed, nor shall electricity, sewer, or water be provided to the structure without further approval of this board." Okay?
Yep.
So seasonal camp is the word that we used before. Okay?
A lot of the discussions between us was rustic cabinets, just because it's been the 1940s.
I'm reading for the, yeah. "Applicant must provide a sanitary sewage disposal at the property, for example, a composting toilet." So the issue is the solar panels and the shower?
Well, yeah, you're adding a lot of water now.
Right, those two things. I'm not denying it, but those are the two changes. Let's talk first about the electric, okay? So he, they claim that the amount of electricity that's being produced is minimal. Right? Three to four, 100 watts, a 12-volt solar panel, so 300 to 400 watts total. Is that, and then they represent that it will only be used, well, it could only be used for a limited number of items, such as a small refrigerator, lights, and/or a television.
Right, or in pumped water.
Or a pump water. I'm not disagreeing. Okay?
Yeah.
So, but it is a minimal amount of electricity, right?
Yes, yeah.
I don't know electricity, so I'm relying on, this is a question. All right. All right. So then, John, let's talk about the wastewater they're creating. Does DES have to permit that?
DES regulations talks about if you have a permanent water supply, then you don't need any, if you don't have a permanent water supply, you don't need any type of system at all, those privies or the outhouse thing that you have, the pit toilets. Those are totally allowed, because I actually have someone put one in now, and I've been dealing with a guy with DES. Now, once you bring water on the site, he told me that you would have to have some kind of tank, but the leaching, depending on the volume of water, could be a dry well or a complete leach field or whatever, but it all comes down to the volume of water and the use. And I didn't talk to him specifically about this application with this shower, because I didn't see this. I was dealing with another issue on something else, but it was a similar type idea where it was very minimal water.
So, let me try and interpret. Does DES have to approve whatever they use for wastewater on, the applicant's not?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
Okay, so they will have to get an app, a permit that's allowed?
Correct. And they'll have to do a test fit, and they gotta be four feet above the seasonal water table and everything, just like any other system.
And if they pump water, they're pumping water directly from the lake and not from a well, right?
That's what their intent is, I believe. You can ask them.
Well, I think that's what you said.
Yeah, that's what it said in the paperwork.
Yeah, so that, that wouldn't be portable water, but it would be okay for, like, showering and cleaning.
Right, right, okay.
He's gonna take a shower using lake water with a shower, with a shower. Either that or he's gonna go in the lake with his soap and take a shower. I don't.
Right, and won't the water go in?
It's all gonna end up in the same place.
Well, no, I thought there was a tank. Didn't you say there was a tank?
Yeah, if it leaches through the system, even a dry well system, it's gonna filter out any soap and any pathogens or something that would come off them, where if you went in the lake, that stuff would be directly in the water. So by doing a system, you're actually cleaner than using the lake to take a bath.
Okay, that makes sense.
George, do you have any questions?
No, I'm just reading on the part that I have a question about is on page six of the, what was provided to us. It talks about the zoning ordinance with prohibits any property from having solar panels. And that's what I was looking up. I was trying to find in our manual, and I just could not find it under six, so.
Where does it say?
Page six, Board's Utility, and it says, third and fourth line down below, it says, "Ordinance does not prohibit the property from having electric sewer-water panels. To the contrary, the zoning ordinance officer requires such utilities." Then under the next one down, 634, requiring subdivisions to have water and sewer systems that comply with DES standards. And that's what I was trying to find, and I can't find it. So I'm trying to find everything, and I just can't find that part of the information. And that's why I was bringing it back up, so when you ask a question, does John have anything else to say on that?
He also says, "Had the property not been vandalized in 2016, Mr. Kelsey would not need any relief from this board to install solar panels, the shower, or the sink," which is to say that he would have needed a building permit for the, John wouldn't even need the building permit for the solar panels? The shower?
The shower's another structure?
Yes. But for this, well, but the way that our code reads is you're allowed to have a structure, an accessory structure, up to 200 square feet. You don't need a building permit through the building codes, and also in the town of Barrington, you don't have to meet setbacks. Now, I have some people that have these little structures, and they sleep in them sometimes. They use them that way, especially down by the lake, and it's, they're allowed it for recreational purpose up to 180 days a year, as long as they have sanitation on site.
So he would not, okay, but to install the solar panels, wouldn't he have needed a building permit?
Yes, he needs an electrical permit to do the solar panels.
Right, and even if he, even if there had, even if there hadn't been any vandalization to put solar panels, and he would have needed building permits, so that's not accurate.
Well, he would still need a permit to put it in. Do you have a copy of RSA 674 in front of you?
Uh, no.
Because what it actually says is a permit is needed for the erection of a building. It doesn't say to get a building permit. So for the erection of a building, that's where it comes in, because that other part was vandalized, and he was rebuilding that section of the building. That's the reason why I couldn't give him the permit, because there was a building that was being erected.
Okay, but what I'm just saying is that, independent of all that, he would have needed electrical permit to put in solar panels.
Correct.
Even if there'd been no vandalizing of the building?
Correct.
For the shower, he would not have needed a building permit, because it would have been less than the 200 square feet? Is that what you're saying, John?
If, yeah, because the building's less than 200 square feet, and it's used for around, is that, what do they call it? A secondary building, an accessory-type building, he wouldn't need a building permit for it. Technically, normally, you would need one to do the plumbing, but in this case, it's not really plumbing. It's just tying to a septic, and you don't need a permit for me to do septic and tie it into septic.
So if DES grants a permit for the tank for the shower, that's?
That's their permit, not mine.
Their permit, and that's saying that it's basically presumed to be safe or whatever?
They do the inspection of the system when it's installed, to make sure it's installed to their standards.
All right, so here's the issue. Who's making the noise, by the way?
I can mute everybody, and then you could log in, and other people want to talk, they can, and the mic close this down a little. So I'm gonna mute everybody, and then you gotta click in to talk, okay?
Am I on?
Okay, Karen, you gotta turn yourself on, and then everybody else is off until they're ready to talk. I don't hear you. You gotta hit your mic, Karen.
Okay. All right, so here's the issue. We've narrowed it down to what the issues are, which is the solar panels and the issue related to the shower in the, in the outhouse. One of the issues that they raised, and I think is one that we need to consider, is the scope of the restrictions that we can put on this building, okay, and on the construction. They've agreed to seasonal use. We've already, that was been in our prior order, that's in the current order. We also We also required in our prior order that the applicant must provide for sanitary sewage disposal at the property, they're going to do that. The restriction that led to the request for re- reconsideration was the limitation on the electricity and the water, okay? Um, Cheryl has pointed out that they're either gonna, people are gonna be there during the summer, they're also gonna take, jump in the lake and wash, and at least if they're in a shower, it, the water gets filtered before, um, it gets released into the land or however it gets dispersed. I have a concern that restricting the solar, which is very limited, does not fit within the scope of what we can do because it's not related to the standard. Um, the standard for what we're giving has to do with the four criteria, um, which were, if the issuance of the permit or erection of the building would not tend to distort the official map or increase the difficulty or carrying out the master plan, if erection of the building or issuance of the permit will not cause hardship to future purchasers, I mean, they're keeping it as a three season building, so therefore it is, will not cause a hardship to future purchases or undue financial impact on the municipality. So I guess that's my concern, and I'm ready to hear from anybody, maybe I'm wrong, maybe my thought process is missing something. Ray, are you talking? Ray, who wants, you have to unmute. Ray?
What, alright, am I there?
Go ahead, yeah.
I forgot to unmute, sorry. So, um, the, when you read six seventy-four, it says, subject to such conditions that it may, you know, we, it may, we may impose, it doesn't put all those others as conditions on those conditions. I mean, yes, they follow, but it's not part of the conditions that the zoning board should be imposing here. As far as what we may impose on these conditions, but anyways.
I, I have no problem with the solar panels, I mean, he's harnessing the sun to get a little bit of electricity to light on the TV or run a shower, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. Also, my laptop's dying, I've got two percent left and I can't find a charger that'll work on it, so I may have to hop on John, with John in a minute.
I see this as a major expansion to what they have, personally, but my opinion.
John, do you have six seventy-four, forty-one?
I can Google it and bring it up on the screen, just a second.
Okay.
Madam Chair, under six seventy-four thirty-three-two, it does verify exactly, I'm in the, uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh, Land Use Regulation Book, and it does verify uh, word for word what Ray was just stating, so that we can impose other items in order for the protection of what's, so we're still within our right to do that.
Six seventy-four thirty-three?
Six thirty-three-two. Uh, so it says right there, and it says, yeah, in exercising its power under paragraph one, the zoning board of adjustment may reverse or affirm wholly or impart, or may modify the order requirements, decision or determination, appeal from, from and may make such order or decision as ought to be made and to that end, shall have all of the powers of the administration official from whom the appeal is taken, so. What Ray is saying is right there, so it is within our power to do that, Madam Chair.
I don't disagree with that, it's just that the restrictions that we impose have to be related to the relief that's granted, so.
Can you see the RSA on the screen?
Yeah, I see it now. In passing on such appeal or application, the Board of Adjustment local. Uh, that's a different, six. So it's in, it's in six seventy. Ray, where were you reading? You weren't reading from six seventy-four forty-one, were you?
Yes, I'm reading, seven-four fourteen, if you scroll down to the paragraph that starts, whenever the enforcement of provisions, so scroll down, John.
Would entail practical difficulty or unnecessary, if the circumstances do not require.
Right.
For such period, permit may appeal from the decision of having charges.
Right, and move up to, in passing such appeal and read from there.
What was that other number, Ray?
It's seventy-four fourteen.
Thank you, I'll find it.
Right, yeah, it starts, whenever the enforcement of the provisions of this section. And then halfway through that paragraph.
Yeah.
From in passing on such appeal or application, the Board of Adjustment, local legislative body or Board of Appeals may make any reasonable exception and shall have the power to authorize or issue a permit, which we have. Subject to such conditions it may impose. Or the issuance of the permit or erection of the building would not tend to distort the official map or increase the difficulty of carrying out master plan upon which it is based. And if erection of the building or issuance of the permit will not cause hardship to future purchases or undue financial impact on the municipality, any such decision made in this connection by the Board of Adjustment, local legislative body or Board of Appeals pursuant to this section, uh, and RSA six seventy-four fourteen, six seventy-four fifteen, shall be in writing together with reasons for the decision, shall be subject to review and mandatory disbarment under RSA six seventy-seven. It doesn't relate to the conditions that we may impose in that agreement.
So.
I think you need to read the very beginning of this, because it talks about no permit shall be issued for the erection of a building, this is what the whole RSA is about. Technically speaking, the addition thing is what it was, so the condition not to have the electricity is what you're putting on there, but the, even though the.
Yeah, right, John, that's, that's what the, that is the condition that we're putting on, we're granting the permit with this condition.
So, let's, let's just talk about a couple procedure issues, okay? We have four members of the board. This is an appeal from a denial by the building inspector. And the issue is that if there's a two-to-two vote, then that means that the request for the appeal or the appeal is denied. We have, and I don't know how the board members are gonna vote. Um, and maybe we can get a sense of that, because then the applicant can decide if they want to wait till next month when we have our new board member, because then we would have five people instead of four people. So I, like Cheryl, don't have a problem with the limited solar or with the, um, water, I mean, the shower. And I know Ray feels very strongly differently, um, I'm not sure.
I also, Madam Chair.
Feel strongly different, along with Ray. So do we want to, um, discuss this with the applicant?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with giving them an option to come back next month.
Well, there's.
I also, yes.
Mr. Mar, do you understand what's going on? Well, you're muted, can you unmute him?
Yes, I do, um, as, as the board was speaking, I, I did separately message, uh, Mr. Kelsey to get his, um, thought on it, as I don't want to speak out of turn with my client. I, I'm available that day, um, I imagine it's the third Wednesday of the month, the, the board's regular meeting date. I had to ask, I apologize for that. Richard, are you on? If you are, you're probably muted.
It looks like the twenty-first of October is the third Wednesday.
He has to press star six in order to talk.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, this is Richard Kelsey.
Hey, Richard, um, thoughts, right, right now, if, and I don't want to speak, um, for, for the board naturally, but it, it seems like there is a two-to-two. One for imposing, um, the condition, two for not, and so.
Mr. Mark, why don't we, um, why don't you talk to your client privately, and we will move on to the next matter?
Okay.
I, I mean, I'll come back to you to give you time, because this is unusual, and we're in the COVID-nineteen time, and.
Understood, I'll give, I'll give him a, a call and, and hop off and mute myself. Richard, I'm gonna give you a call.
Okay.
Alright.
Let's go on to the next matter. It is two-two-three dash two-six dash R C dash two-zero dash variance. Owner is Route one twenty-five Development LLC, it's a request for, by the applicant for a variance under Article three permitted uses. And the next matter is three, which is two-two-three dash twenty-six dash R C, these are the same properties, right, applications? Okay, so we're gonna hear both of them together. R C dash twenty dash special exception owner Route one twenty-five Development LLC, is the applicant present?
The applicant is present, um, good evening, Mark Johnson representing the applicant, um, for the applicant, Joe Falzoni uh, should be here, um, as well as Scott Cole from Beals Associates.
Okay, do you want to go forward?
Um, certainly, um, I, I do have a short PowerPoint that if I can open the share tray and see if I can put it on the, on the screen. Is the board able to see the PowerPoint?
Yep.
Yes, I have it.
Okay, great, um, uh, tonight we're seeking a variance from the use requirement um, to allow three residential lots in the regional commercial district, and a special exception to permit access across a side different from the frontage. Um, the board may be aware that this was originally approved as a, um, open space subdivision, um, with fifty-five open space lots and five commercial lots, uh, that are.
Madam Chair, I'm having trouble hearing with, because of background noise.
Yeah, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna mute everybody again, and then you can click in one person, okay?
No.
Okay, now you can click in, just make your presentation. Well, hit the mic so you can start talking and make your presentation.
Okay, can you hear me now? Uh, hopefully you can hear me. The, uh, commercial lots, um, are along one twenty-five, which are in this area, the residential subdivision, um, is in the back. After the approval of the subdivision, uh, it became clear that the use of the commercial lot, C five, which is an area over here, uh, for commercial use will be both difficult to permit and very difficult, um, to have as a commercial use because of the existence of the wetlands along the front of the lot. The wetlands separate one twenty-five, uh, from the buildable area of the lot, and as a result of the wetlands and the wetland buffers, it would have to be set back at least a hundred and fifty feet from Route one twenty-five. And as we'll talk a little bit later, uh, it is very unlikely that we can get approval to put a driveway through the wetlands. The proposed site plan is to subdivide the lot, the, uh, C three, into three residential lots in this area over here, um, and then the access to the residential lots would be off of the subdivision road, which would be extended to provide the access. Uh, that's the reason for the special exception, uh, as the, uh, though the lots would have frontage on one twenty-five, the access to it would be from the rear of the lot and the rear side of the lot. Uh, the variance to permit to residential lots in a commercial zone, we believe that the special conditions exist. Uh, we have extensive wetlands, we have buffers, steep topography, we'll have a building envelope that's far back from one twenty-five, uh, that makes, uh, being able to visually see any building from one twenty-five extremely difficult, and which limits the commercial use of the property. The residential use is permitted in the commercial district as part of the mixed use, uh, mixed use, um, and we don't believe there'll be any diminution, uh, in the surrounding property values, um, and it's consistent with the conditionally approved residential subdivision. Uh, the special, the reasons for the special exception, again, there's no detriment to property values, um, in the vicinity. This permits the access to be from the subdivision, residential subdivision road. It would not create any additional safety issues, no demand of municipal services, um, and certainly protects the natural resources by ensuring that no access will go through the existing wetlands and the existing buffer areas. We provided to the board as part of the application, a letter from Gulf Environmental, um, which, uh, supports our position that it's very unlikely that access through the wetlands, uh, would be approved from one twenty-five. The commercial access, if we tried to do it through the residential subdivision, uh, would result um, in a road, uh, that's in excess of two thousand, uh, square feet, it would have to go up along here, then along the back, coming down, and then that would provide access to the lots. Um, that we don't believe makes sense, it's a long road, which would result in commercial vehicles going through a residential neighborhood. And this is a, what we would anticipate being a redesigned site plan, we'd have to go back to the planning board for the planning board's approval. Um, and again, the road to be extended, the, uh, residential lots would be up in here. If the board has questions, I'm happy to answer them, and if I can't, I'm happy to turn it over to Scott Cole.
One question, it, it's just this one lot here that is affected, not the other, the other two are commercial lots too, right, those are fine?
That, that's correct, so, so the end result would be, the anticipated redesigned site plan would be fifty-eight residential lots and four commercial lots. One commercial lot would be divided into three residential lots. All three residential lots would meet the requirements in the zoning district. Uh, they would, uh, they're all, uh, they meet all the dimensional requirements, they'll meet all the setback requirements as a lot in the zoning district.
Um, are there questions from any other board members?
Am I on? Okay, have you had, uh, planning board approval of this plan at all, any input?
Uh, we have not had input, we, we figured we had to come to zoning board first, um, and from assuming we get relief from the zoning board, we then go to the planning board. Um, one additional note is that it is a cemetery in the area, and it would also allow us to have increased setback uh, for the lot that the cemetery is on. Uh, but we felt it was prudent to come to the zoning board first and then go to the planning board.
What's going to happen to lot C five?
Let me go back to C five.
Right there.
Lot, yeah, lot C five would, would be divided into three residential lots.
Alright, then it's my mistake, it's C one, then I was counting the wrong way, C one, C one stay in existence?
C one stays in existence.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Cheryl, any questions?
No, makes good sense to me, I mean, to make those lots come up one twenty-five would be dangerous and very, very costly.
No. Well, any more questions from the board?
Nope.
Alright, is there anybody, um, on who wants to speak in favor of the application? Anybody on who wants to speak in opposition? Hearing none will close the, um, the, uh, public portion of the meeting, and the board will discuss the relief that's requested. I just wanna, let me just briefly go over, I think he had a slide that listed all the, um. I just want, let me just briefly go over, I think he had a slide that listed all the reasons. Yeah, the wetlands, the buffers, it is steep topography there. Building envelope would be far back from 125 and limiting commercial use. I, I agree with the special conditions that-
There are a lot of wetlands there.
Yeah, there'll be no diminution of surrounding property values. It's consistent with the ordinance. I like the idea that, you know, they have to use the access through the residential and those residences are probably going to be not visible from the road, or barely visible, if anything. Certainly consistent with the public interest. Any other comments from anybody?
No. I guess, you know, this is kind of unusual for us to see. I would say it's conditional on planning board approval, obviously, but-
And that's acceptable. We couldn't do anything without planning board approval.
Alright, so we have two requests, the special exception. What's the criteria for the special exception? Oh, here it is. Thank you for having these slides. No detriment to property values in the vicinity. No hazards, no traffic issues, right? Minimal added traffic, no excessive demand on municipal services. That's true. No degradation of existing. Any other comments on the special exception?
I think it's a good plan.
No. I make a motion, we grant the special exception.
Second.
I'm going to call a roll call. George?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And Karen Forbes, aye. Did we have a, we didn't have a motion on the variance yet?
No.
That's, that's correct.
Variance slide up, please. I like this. These guys are good.
I'm getting good at this. There are too many night meetings that are by Zoom these days.
Alright.
That's a job for us. Thank you.
Ray, you wanted to make this condition on planning board approval, right?
Conditional on planning board approval, yes.
Okay, so make a motion.
I make a motion that we grant this variance based on planning board approval.
Second.
Conditioned on planning board approval. Alright. Cheryl?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
And I vote yes. So it's a vote of four to nothing. Both requests are granted.
Thank you very much.
Is Mr. Mar there?
John, can you clear the screen, please?
That's not my screen. It's there. I allowed Mark to have it. He's got a-
Yep, I'm going to say goodnight. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Do you want to? Do we have a phone number for Eric Mar? I know what happened to him.
John, I can see an EM.
Eric? Eric, you there?
I see him.
There he is. Okay, Eric, what do you want to do?
He's muted.
Put a big unmute sign up.
We're good with, with having a continuance and we appreciate the board agreeing to consider this on another night.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Cheryl?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
And I vote yes, too. Alright, so it'll be continued to October 21st.
October 21st. Thank you. Thank you all and have a very good night.
Thank you.
And we have our new board member on as a guest.
You want to introduce yourself to everybody? Dave?
Hi, Dave. Unmute.
Unmute.
Hi, finally. I, I've been having since seven o'clock trying to get in through here.
I actually let you in four times. You kept going back out.
I had the software called the VAST that was just driving me nuts here. It was really being a pain in the neck, so I'm sorry it took so long, but hi, I'm Dave. Thank you.
Dave, this is Marsha, the town planner. One of the things you're going to need to do is basically take your oath of office gets sworn in. I would suggest that you call the clerk's office, Kim's office, just so you can set up a time to be able to go in. Because, because they keep their door locked because they do registrations. But if you call ahead, then they can arrange for you to come in to do your oath of office.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. I'll do that.
Make sure you have a face mask with you.
Oh, yeah.
She may even come out to the car for you, too.
I don't go anywhere without my mask, so.
We all have our assortment.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's been a while since I've been part of the town voluntary services, but I'm back, I guess. I just retired, so I've got more time now.
What did you do before with the town?
I was on the rec commission.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know George. I recognize George from years. Oh, I was, when the rec, my daughter was young and involved in recreation and back then, there was a rec director that was just not very ethical and he was stealing money. And so I signed up.
No comment.
He locked up. Yeah, I think his service or internet connection is slow. That's why he's going to have this in and out. So he might need to adjust that for our regular meetings. He can get that straightened out. He can always come into town hall and be able to use the wifi here, if he needs to.
John, is that, John, is that why Karen's is so fuzzy? She comes-
Yeah, that's why he keeps going, Dave keeps going in and out. And I actually let him into the meeting like four or five times and he kept losing it going out. And I think it's because his internet access is too slow.
Huh, he's on the same road as me, Dave, John.
Depends on what he's got for access. He might have a different, he might have like a wifi. I mean, what do they call him? Like a Verizon type thing?
Yeah, yeah. I'm on Atlantic broadband, but I also have a business account here out of the house, so.
Yeah.
That might help for me.
And it depends on your connection, in your individual connection, yeah.
So, alright, hey, I think we still have one thing to do.
Alright, so let's talk about the, yeah, the minutes. Anybody?
Minutes are fine. I looked at them.
Alright, is there a motion to approve?
My motion to approve minutes.
Second?
Second.
Alright, Cheryl? George?
Second. Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Karen, yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Aye.
George?
Yes.
Ray?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Good night, everyone.
Hey, be safe.
Take care.